Hey, welcome to the Lions Bay Committee of the Hall. The date is Thursday, October the 2nd, the time 2025, the time is 6:01. With that, we'll call meeting order. And we'll move to adopt the agenda, the recommendation to adopt the October 2nd, 2025. The whole second. All in favor?
Yes.
Public participation, no one in the gallery here, is there anyone online that would like to speak?
Just genuinely.
Yeah, not, not.
Okay. No delegations this evening, we'll move to item number five, approval of minutes prior meetings. And the do I have a motion to approve April 1st, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
Speaking.
Any comments, edits?
Not for me.
All in favor?
Ayes.
Oh, motion carried. Okay, motion to approve the June 3rd, 2025 minutes.
Moved.
Seconded.
Second.
Comments?
Not for me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, motion carried.
Yep.
No business arising? Unfinished business, none, will move to reports. Eight point one, approval of the financial statements. Okay. Pass it over to Mr. Cherkov. Can you give us any background or answer any questions?
Nothing's changed from the previous statements that have been provided to council. This is a formality for council to approve statements so that the auditor can sign it.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the statements?
I don't.
Moved by Counselor Abbott, seconded.
Sorry, we can't approve this, it's pretty of all.
Yes, thank you.
So, but we did, I think the idea was we, the call was online in case we didn't question, I think that's why it's here.
Okay, so the approval for information and information should be stated differently. So with that, any comments?
Yeah, I've got a few questions.
Okay, I'll just mention, and I think I had a discussion with the C O. If there are comments at a high level, that would be appreciated. Any line by line items, it would be better offline or go directly to Mr. Cherkov. That would save a lot of time, so I'll try to focus our council members on high level of questions. With that, I'll open up the floor, we can go around the table, Counselor Abbott, you have your hand up.
Okay, yeah, I thought the reason the auditor was here was to give us a chance to ask questions. So it might seem somewhat line by line, I've got a dozen questions and things I didn't understand, some of them.
Okay, Mr. Cherkov's here to answer questions, we don't have our.
Yeah, he's online, he's online.
So, yeah, this tablet is not working.
No, can't see it from this angle, so.
Do we have a.
I can try, but it's been, it's been very default.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps you could pause for a minute while we do a technical thing?
What do we need?
Where should we go?
Counselor McGlocklin has suggested a pause, and I think that's a good idea until we get the monitor up and running and see who's.
Since you're gonna arrest my case.
It could have been.
Are those dogs on the TV or dogs at the door?
I think the mayor likes to see himself as Mr. Potato Head. Or whatever that guy is.
That's interesting. I think something fell in the pit. Don't recognize the character.
No.
Should give you a rearview mirror. You know what, maybe.
Connection was very sensitive and.
Well, there's no wireflying.
It's like. It's a, it's a whole.
The thing, okay. So do you wish to. Corey, provide a summary, is that what your intent is?
Yeah, so Mr. Vanderhorst is online. Apologies for any confusion. We were anticipating approval, but I guess that would be deferred to the RCM on the second, or next week. But if you have. Corey, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of walking us through one more time this statements in your audit funding letter, that would be great. Then we'll open up the floor for the counselors if there's any questions.
Yep, absolutely.
So for you?
Just gonna send the request there for Crystal, let me share screen. Okay, so I can walk you through some quick highlight of the financial statements again, as Joe said. No change from what was presented previously. I'm not sure if you can see this, but if you're following along in your packages. You know, the, I'll start with the audit report itself, the audit opinion. We are providing a clean audit opinion. We're satisfied this financial statements presented fairly in all material respects. In accordance with public sector accounting standards, so that's the important part. And then at a really high level, as I scroll back through here, the statement of financial position. The village has cash and cash equivalents of $6.2 million at the end of the year. Total financial assets of $6.9 million. On the liability side, the biggest number there is long term debt being paid down on schedule. It's 1,454,000. Long term debt and payables and other liabilities totaled $2.6 million. So the net financial asset position of the village is $4.3 million. And that's just down a little bit from the prior year's 4.4. Capital assets, you know, infrastructure buildings that you're managing have increased from 23.4 to 24.2 million dollars. And you have an accumulated surplus at the end of the year of 28.5. On the next page, you get your statement of operations. The revenues, taxes, user fees, annual transfers for the year totaled $5.5 million. Just a little bit down from the 5.7 in the previous year. And expenses were 4.88 million dollars, up about $270,000 from the prior year. But below budget, so budget had been for 5.2 million dollars of expenses. And only 4.8 incurred throughout 2024. So an accounting surplus of 678,208 for the end of the year. That's a really quick run through on the financial statements. I'll pause there and be happy to take questions from council. If they're, as the mayor mentioned, if they're very detailed, I will defer to Mr. Cherkov to get into some of the, some of the details there.
Okay, Counselor Abbott, you have your hand up.
Um, yeah, one of the questions that I had earlier were. On the next section, statement of cash flows. And it was, I just, on page nine of the report. Maybe it's a question for Joe, the capital transactions, the cash used to acquire tangible assets. Was minus four, 4.43 million in 2024. In 2023, it was only 97 and a half million. What is, what causes the big change in that?
Clat building was completed in 2024 and ASAP was completed, that was six, almost $700,000.
Okay. I guess I didn't understand, cash used to acquire tangible assets, okay, all right, now, why don't you explain a few other things? So I wasn't maybe thinking about it today. Okay. Then, another thing I didn't understand, so. On. Page 16. General purchases, collection of the tax revenues. Very Vancouver Transportation Authority.
See some.
Why?
Yep.
It's a line, yeah. So our payment forward to nature went up really significantly, I went up by 41, 15, $56,000.
It's purely mechanical calculation based on our assessed values from VCAA and their mill rates they send us. Put it in its spreadsheet, and that's the assessment.
So our assessments went disproportionately to the rest of nature?
I can provide you with a detailed breakdown of how that calculation was made, I don't have that in front of me, but.
It would be logically the only explanation, right? Okay. And then the next question I've got is, this is on the reserve fund, this is probably more budget discussion, not so much volume discussion, but. While it's on mine, maybe I'll mention it, the infrastructure fund, we've got a million bucks sitting there. And we've spoken about using that and drawing down from it, we still haven't, are we gonna do it this year?
That will lead in, that's a great question.
Be in the budget discussion.
Yes.
We are planning to draw, draw from that.
And I, yeah, put some slides on that to do a deep dive into kind of what reserve funds are consisting of and how we're expecting to do.
And then the other question was the gas, the gas tax, I mean, this is not something else we obligated to spend. Not just sending the bank an interest on them, we haven't done, it's gone up another 20,000 this year. And it's now sending $700,000.
Also being drawn down.
We are gonna draw down this year. Okay. The government, so I've jumped to page 23, the government transfers. That significant difference is the grants, because we hadn't done Beach Park, right?
Twenty three government transfers.
Page 23, government transfers, actuals in 2024, 965,000, the financial plan was 2.2 million. That would be because we didn't do the beach park.
There was also the lead in. It's not all the beach chart, there was 300,000 approximately from. When we, we spent, increased the cost and then recovered. Money to the 73% portion of their funding. And we had $100,000 from FIRE that they applied for the grant to. Fire Safety or Fire Smart.
We didn't do it?
Oh, we did, we bought the money, so that's why we didn't know about it, but then, then not what you mean came up.
Okay, I said it wasn't in the plan, but we didn't know that.
Yeah.
My only other question I want to give is probably be a budget. Discussion, but my, on page, page 23. The labor costs, so if you go to 2023, we had an actual labor cost of 1.76 million. And I remember talking about that, and I think there was some payouts and whatever, versus a budget. Plan was 1.645, and in 2024, we got 1.645. But the actuals were over $2 million. Is this explainable by the whole. QP arrangement?
A portion of it is, so we accrued a portion of the amount that related to 2023, the 2023 audit. So what was in 2024 is the amount of retro pay. Plus, it includes the increases in actual wage hours, rate, rate, rate hours. So that is, there's no real change in staffing, that was, it really is a relative result of.
Pretty skinny, so two years.
And you have a.
$400,000. Okay.
If I could just add that contract is due. And it's gonna be in negotiations for another three years presumably. And I can imagine that the union will be coming with zero, zero, zero. Negotiation, so.
I mean, it's, it's increased, I mean, if you projected that rate forecast that going on, it's just unsustainable, that's a huge increase. 25% increase in a year.
And just to reiterate, there's not an increase in service levels, that is existing service levels.
And. Just give me a thought. Okay, well, we discussed it more in the budget session.
Just a little bit more on that. To set you up for the budget discussion. One of the challenges of the situation that we are in, council should keep in the back of its mind. Is the fact that. The union negotiates with the larger communities first. And we sort of bring up the rear, so they basically set the tone. And we got to essentially follow suit, give or take. So we need one to keep an eye on what you see other communities, not that, so with city, district. Choose it there. What they advertise is their settlement, negotiate the settlement. Contract, that'll give you sense as to what's coming. I have no idea.
Okay, any further questions for Mr. Vanderhorst?
I've got, yeah, just a couple, two more questions on the actual. The Sophie financial information, section, the schedule six, or schedule remuneration, section six.
What page is that?
Page. It's not page numbered in the report, but it's 52 of our package. It's not page numbered in the report. Schedule six.
Okay.
Yeah, apologies, I don't have the Sophie in. But actually, you've got it online, hold on, sorry, it was page.
This has all got in front of us.
I don't have it in front of me, but.
You don't, okay, we know it's about, there's a sent you email on it already.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you know what's coming next. Yes, you know what it is, yeah, okay, so there's two things on this, this report. First of all, once again, I want to point out to everyone, we have a bylaw for council increases. That says council increase goes up by the cost of the CPI of the previous year on the 1st of January. And council remuneration, the 2024 and 2023 is exactly the same number. So we haven't followed through on councils, a lot of money, not looking for money here, but we have to, we have to follow our bylaws, so that's something we haven't done.
Yeah, so that always just wasn't cash paid out, because we're reporting on what was actually paid. We will. Readjust, and you get a retro pay after each year.
Not that I expect Corey to catch everything, but surely you had an audit function to what would have been something if we not following one of our bylaws, which is a remuneration bylaw.
I would.
And Counselor, I'll just point out that the auditor doesn't actually review the Sophie report, it's something prepared by staff afterwards. So this is the first time I'm seeing these numbers as well.
Okay, all right, so we do this, this remuneration bylaw sets a council increase every year. And it hasn't happened for the last two years, and I think staff just needs to take an action to follow the bylaw.
Okay, any questions?
There's also a mistake here, Mr. Cherkov can correct, I did not have $1,695 of expenses. I think they attributed to someone else, because I only went to one conference, mine should be around 600, but didn't have any expenses other than the conference fee, but you got it, got that corrected or?
Yeah, so I've been working with Karen, I will adjust that.
You adjusted? Okay.
Okay, any further questions?
I think that's mine.
Okay, any other counselors, any questions?
Quick question, in terms of. Sorry, the employees in excess of $75,000, does that include the retroactive payments?
That's total remuneration.
Total remuneration for the year. For the year, okay, so birthday, for example, that's everything, all in.
Yeah.
Overtime, back pay, yeah, it's, okay, thank you.
Counselor Conlon, thank you.
Yeah, I'm curious about the, I seem to, we haven't spent an extraordinary amount of money in comparison to my other colleagues. And I only see one line item for the LGM LA of $695, so am I missing something here? Because I can't see me on the list, so I don't know why I've been attributed $2,200 in expenditures.
I can come back to you with the details, so this is basically something we pulled from the system, based on expense course that connect back then.
I think we all went to the UBCM last year. Yeah, if I could, I think it was the LGMA plus the UBCM.
UBCM, yeah.
Okay, I just, I don't see the UBCM listed on here with my name attributed to it, so yeah, Joe, if you could just give me some more details, that'd be great, thank you.
So, Joe, the other thing that's wrong, you sent your report, the detail you sent me, there was a LGA. We don't go to the LGA council, that's only a staff, if anyone of those did. I'm sorry, not L.
L G A.
Local Government Association. Yeah, so that was the one conference you did, we couldn't have went L in LGA.
Okay, any other questions, or is this something we can do offline?
We can do it offline, but I'm just saying that, that's might be where the confusion.
Any other counselors, have any comments? No, okay, we'll accept the report for information. And we'll move to next item, which is. Eight point two zoning development bylaw, number 520, Mr. Blackwell, over to you.
Thanks, Corey, thank you for that, Corey. Corey, thank you.
Thank you, Corey.
This will be a front of council on Tuesday for approval.
Thanks, Corey. And Mr. Blackwell, eight point two.
Is that the next thing I'm gonna do? So I'm a little bit confused with regard to the glitch that happened on this agenda. I believe, unless I'm wrong, to Cherkov, they tend to do preliminary budget overview.
Yeah, there was some miscommunication, we should have received the full budget package. And then I have a PowerPoint presentation that we'll put up here to give a high level of discussion. And talking points and goals for our next meeting. And we think, okay, Mr. Blackwell, we accepted the agenda, do we backtrack on that, or in the past you've said if it wasn't added? So I think that'll have to be brought to the next meeting or pushed to Tuesday.
So I can answer that, so one of two choices, you could dovetail it with regard to this larger financial discussion. And combine the two for reasons of expediency, given that it's a county meeting, you have a little bit more latitude. Than you do with a regular because it's a county.
All right, I think we'll move to the next item, I know you've schooled us in the past on, once we've approved the agenda, so eight point two, over to you, Mr. Blackwell.
I have nothing to say on any of these items, these are all except that counsel deferred to committee of all for discussion, so I appear to answer any questions.
Okay, Counselor Blackwell?
Thank you very much, Mayor Berry. Thank you very much, CEO Blackwell. Just to put it into two sentence, sentences, the legislation that's before us is. And does not drive any resident. Any current resident to be offside due to the proposed changes. That's a question.
Mr. Blackwell? Thank you, no, the issue at hand is that that section of the bylaw references to. And the issue with that is that's.
My second part is that this is coming forward to us, and it's been brought to our attention due to specific property.
Thank you, no, not necessarily, what, where this came up was a conversation about a property wanting to undertake some works. But this section doesn't apply to this property, as it turns out, there's a laid away decided which excludes it. But during that conversation, this dissonance.
Back to the first question, the legislation before us does not drive any resident to be offside due to proposed changes.
No.
Thank you.
How does it, can you give us a little explanation, how does it affect the property owners, or more of an advantage or disadvantage? If that frontage is on the ocean side versus the road roadway side? Because I don't fully understand, I understand that there should only be one frontage, but I don't understand what, what's the difference between? If that frontage is designated on the water side versus the roadside, does it result in pushing a building envelope one direction or another?
It's a good question, so legally, there's only four properties, right, front, rear, inside, inside, or outside, outside would be on the corner of five, those are your only options. With regard to the section of the bylaw, what building has always done is applied because of the language, it had been. Interpreted as averaging of the. Front yard facing the ocean. So, but that is not possible, it's impossible, so it should say the rear yard facing the ocean. So how it's been applied won't change, it's just using the correct word to describe what building has always been doing with regards to setting. So status quo, just changing the word to be accurate. So typically, what.
Okay, I still, I'm understanding that we can only have one frontage. And sort of the simplistic way to look at it would, most people's frontage would be their driveway. Because that driveway usually comes in from one direction, so why would, and again, I'm not saying good or bad, just trying to understand. And why would we designate a waterfront property. Frontage on the ocean side versus the driveway side?
That's the issue, it's improper. It's not a frontage. The frontage is that section of the property that encompasses road and road. So again, in terms of how that section of the bylaw has been applied since the bylaw was written, doesn't change. All we're doing here is switching the word from front yard to rear yard, because that's what it is. But how it's been applied won't change, so whether it's, whether the back end of that, the averaging. Concept is good or bad, I'm not weighing in on, that's not up for debate from a staff perspective. The only thing that is up for debate for, from the staff's perspective is simply changing the name to the correct vernacular. Instead of calling the rear yard a front yard, calling the rear yard a rear yard. Which is the word change.
And the rear yard would be.
Facing the ocean.
Facing the ocean, yeah. I'm gonna have arguments with my wife, because I always say the front.
Yeah, I know, we have the same problem.
Anyway, I just sort of walked through it so basic, but, but we're just eliminating one of those. And, and the front yard is going to be where the driveway comes in.
Yes.
And everyone can relate to, doesn't matter where the property is located.
Yeah, we're just changing the word to be the correct word.
As you can, any other questions, Counselor Blackwell?
Thank you, and back to the auctions here, this is non decision meeting, we've been passing a lot of legislation lately. We have or have not granted first and second reading, or we're gonna do that at the next RCM. What, first, or how correct I am again, which was it?
I think you're correct that it was not granted first or second, so this would, to move it on, if council was so minded to move it on.
To the third?
Here we go.
So you, let's get your.
It was on September 2nd, granted first and second.
Public hearing?
That will be the next thing.
Well, that's where I'm going with, where does the public hearing pay?
Thank you, so normally, council would grant in this situation, pertaining to zoning law, council would normally, instead of practices, first and second reading. And, and public hearing. So council didn't do that on this occasion, so it would be first and second is paid granted. And so on Tuesday, this will be moved to the Tuesday agenda, and the resolution that council could consider is only that scheduled, public hearing be scheduled. You can't, you can't, you can't do public hearing at third, you do the public hearing only.
Where do you schedule, you're not gonna try hold the public hearing Tuesday?
You have to decide to, that you want on schedule. So it would be a resolution that says that staff be directed to schedule a public. So it would be a resolution that says that staff be directed to schedule a public hearing for application.
How long do you have to give for the? What's the minimum time to schedule a public hearing?
It's just one of these two week things.
Two, it's two consecutive weeks. Yes, yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay, and then we can't do third.
Yeah.
So and then so we can't do third reading until we tell the public hearing preemptive, is that right?
Blackwell.
Correct. Yeah, I saw in some situations. Uh, council can do public hearing and do consider third. That's usually very uncommon. It's usually the first second public hearing, pause, and everyone goes away. Exactly. Staff will often do a public hearing summary if it's complicated. Right. This one is not, if it were, a public hearing summary.
Should we wish to though we could do the public hearing at the end of the public hearing? If we were so disposed with it, with the two third reading.
In theory.
Yes, but I reckon not.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Just one last thing on that one. So pointed out in the last meeting, there's a mistake in the report. Quote the wrong clause. You got the one with eight thousand square meters. Still the same report, still the same mistake.
Yeah.
Sorry, I mean, I did several times, so that. Technical thing, because I definitely.
It's still showing up soon, so.
All right.
Don't take it the public hearing like that because you're here about.
Counselor Abbott, maybe you can reach out to them for the next meeting and.
We told them the really, know what it is, the really fixed.
Okay, uh, eight point three zoning developments bylaw. Anything further on that?
No, the only thing I would add, so this has been before council several times. But so I'm saying this more as a reminder to council. How the these provisions were included in the zoning bylaw. Were problematic. When I read these things, I was concerned that the provision, some of the provisions are ultra-vires. Which basically translates into beyond legal authority, A of the C O authorities that they not legally entitled to have. So I saw Luke Stone's confirmation on that and they confirmed that that was in fact correct. Um, and also on that basis, uh, what was brought forward for council consideration was. The work of Allison Espa like to sort of fine tune it and make it work as it was intended to work. You'll recall there's a discussion about the policy. As a companion to that, you'll recall also in that discussion with Allison. Uh, that if a bylaw or a section of a bylaw is properly written. Its interpretation is simple and straightforward. And does not require a policy in order to be able to interpret, to provide sort of a codex to what what is intended for us. So what has been before council is both. But my recommendation to you is to keep it simple, waive the policy, you don't need it. The reason is. That the language Allison Espa likes put it putting in the as a recommended amendment is clean and tight. So all it's needed. And this kind of is legal.
So next steps are third reading or do we need a public hearing?
This will be a public hearing.
That's all. Do we do this same times?
It's the same day, but each one is a separate public hearing.
Okay. But any other questions, Councilor Blackwell?
Thank you very much, Mr. Blackwell. Um. Given a recent befuffle on public hearing kind of things, so this will be posted in the village update. In some kind of a laymanish language.
Yeah.
Blackwell. Strangely enough. Yes and no is the answer.
Really odd answer.
Well, you know, I mean, wouldn't it be obvious if if we.
I do, I think we're still wearing the bruises of a recent event, so.
So the answer is no and yes, so.
How do we improve on it, I guess, is the.
Thank you, Mayor Berry.
So so the answer is there are legal parameters, so there's specific legal language and we are.
So time and date.
Required. No, there's more than that. All of that gobbledygook is because we're legally required to do that. Now, if we want to add more. The translate preamble will know it's an explanation of all that gobbledygook in layman's terms. We can do that, but it costs more. Text space in the newspaper. So it costs us more money to duplicate that in layman's language as well.
We're talking about outside publication now.
Can I ask the question?
Which papers? Yeah, Counselor Kandla?
Yeah, is this one of those we have to I post either in the Peak or the North Shore News?
North Shore News, yeah.
I know in the past we've used the 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 Peak. Because it was in considered in the Cedar Sky corridor. I don't know if it's maybe less expensive than posting in the North Shore News, but. I mean, obviously, our outreach is going to be to our residents, which will be more so. Uh, concentrated on using the V U as the touchstone, but legally obligation, if we have to use a media. Newspaper, then I would recommend that staff look at which is going to be less expensive because the North Shore News from my experience is. Similar in price to posting in the Vancouver Sun in province.
What if you do the bare bones of the North Shore, but in the village update, you give a nice, uh, friendlier explanation? What a great idea. Okay, there we go. Um, but I I think we're all, I I think we're all.
You're very formal in the newspaper.
We're all feeling that that last round go around was, um. I know we follow the regulations and I think we were all, including residents, were a little taken back that after the process was already fully approved, that that. There there happened to be questions and.
Yeah, this is the the notification requirements for public hearings are totally different than for providing notice for. The actual content, the language is actually specified by legislation, so two separate things.
Um, without without going too much more into it, would it would it be helpful if if you? Uh, just drafted, just a quick an email to all of us, the council, on how we might improve that or or make it a little friendlier? Uh, that to, uh, uh, kind of, um, help the residents, because I again, um. The last go around, even though it was all to legislation, it was. I think it didn't didn't seem to go as smoothly as as everyone would have liked. Is there something that you could rather than us discuss every detail here?
Well, I could tell you, I could tell you that's just purely operational and you don't need to worry about it. You just need to worry about that we're following the law. That's all you should really be worried about. The rest you can leave to us. So that said, uh. Yeah, my first goal is to make sure you follow the law, whether every other community does that. So I.
Yeah, Counselor Abbott.
Can you finish what I'm saying here? And that is, we do what every other community and hundreds of thousands of other residents. Deal with every day. So I have faith that Lions Bay residents are as capable as the residents of West End, North End, Burnaby, Richmond, Coquitlam, et cetera. That said, uh. Once we develop the our the specific legal obligations in the language we are required to use. The language of every municipality across British Columbia uses for the village update. We have latitude, you don't have to follow that. We are required to put specific language in the North Shore News or whenever these people we use. So village update, we are, we don't, we're not under that obligation, so we have that ability in that situation to make it. Simpler to read, less of the legal jargon, so it's easier for people to understand, but we can't do that in the newspaper. All right, Counselor.
Oh, after Counselor Abbott, please.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, not comfortable with, we should only be doing what the minimum is. I think absolutely we should, yes, I get you, and do the minimum in the North Shore News. But I always over communicate it or try to over communicate with residents on on matters and things that have changed. Absolutely, we can do all we should do. So we've always done it because other municipalities choose just to do the minimum, doesn't mean that's the way Lions Bay wants to do it. It's not the way we've always done it before.
Okay, Counselor Kandla?
My suggestion would be that whatever we post.
I had another question afterwards, but I guess, yeah, I can't forget, Jamie told.
Okay, Counselor Kandla?
I'll make it brief. My suggestion would be to mirror whatever is posted in the North Shore News. In the village update with a further drilled down, deeper explanation into what it means for residents. In more user-friendly terminology. That way, somebody reading something in the North Shore News isn't going to question a second version that they're reading in the village update. It'll be just mirrored and then explained more and less cost or no cost to taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Abbott.
Okay, so what I was going to carry on to say, and I assume there will also be a mechanism for residents. To respond to what they see in the village update, they don't have to show up at public hearing to have this say.
That was to Blackwell.
That's correct. No, written submissions. Uh, there'll be an option two for standard online. Uh, contributions as well as in person.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I one technical question that I was on today, I screwed it, but we went down the rabbit hole. Um, on the first bullet on page one of your report. It's the provisions, so you got the compliance provincial legis- provincial legislation is the heading, and then you've got the provisions in the existing policy and bylaw. Need to be updated to ensure consistency with provincial S T R regulations. So. Is is something changed? What what is meant by that? What what do we need to understand? Hopefully in the main of these terms, what's actually changed or why, what what did that? If that if they did trigger this change in any way.
And so Blackwell.
Thank you. Uh. No, those weren't the things that triggered the change. These were alsos that Allison identified. I wasn't paying that close of attention as soon as I saw these. Uh, these authorities granted that were I I thought were ultra-vires, I said, here, take a look at the whole thing rather than me reading through it all. And she Allison said, wow, also, there's a few other tweaks that have to be made. This is like six months old now or eight months ago that this happened, so I don't remember the specifics.
So we got straightened out on the opt-in versus opt-out thing because Allison initially thought differently, right?
I'll have to go back to her again to ask that.
Right, we want, none of this is about us having opted in, which we didn't, right?
Uh, so through you, so, uh, no, all Allison did is fine tune the existing language. She did change its its intent. So whatever, whatever was intended to be achieved when the old language has been maintained. She has just removed authorities that the C O should not have. Uh, and we changed a few. Numerical size items like the number of. Users and the number of budgets, something I kind of never asked so long ago. So all that was, that was all sort of explained to council. Twice before, uh, so if there are additional like specific questions, uh, you know, come on in. And I'm happy to sit down with anybody that wants to sort of go through any of those details, because on the fly, it's tough to remember. Exactly what changed, but the pithin substance. Is not, it's just basically a refresh to make it resonate or reflect the current. Regulations to reflect what is legal authority and to create defensible metrics.
Okay, any further questions?
Final point of that, just in the original discussion with Addison, she mentioned that, you know, it was like that because we opted in, which was the two. Came in which way, which was negative deposit, and we said, no, we haven't, and then she was going to get back and check, so I'm just going to make sure that's done. I just asked her that question.
All right, any further questions?
Yeah, one last thing. Um, so we're still talking about a policy and a bylaw in the previous meeting. I was trying to promote that we did have the policy. Um, did we read the first two readings without the policy? Is that what happened? Did we clear on that?
Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, that does, whether you did or you didn't, it doesn't matter. Uh, if council is so minded at third reading after public hearing to move forward with just the bylaw, that's all we did. Like Ross, as a council member, I move that bylaw X be granted third reading easily to that. And by the way.
I think you had mentioned before that the policy.
Pretty much.
You mentioned before, we didn't need a policy if it was well written.
Correct. You know, I with that, and council always has the latitude. None of this stuff is ever carved in stone. Council always retains the latitude to entertain. Any sort of policy, I'll clarify dysfunctional language, so. There's always ability to respond.
All right, with that, I'll move to eight point four draft subdivision and Mr. Blackwell. Anything you'd like to tell us about this before we open up for questions?
Thank you. No, not really. I sort of, I'll I'll say what I said when this first came before council. Uh, the existing subdivision servicing bylaw is effectively one page. Uh, you'll see how it compares with this bylaw. The draft is draft. Uh, the. The, uh. Existing bylaw basically says we do, I'm paraphrasing and taking significant liberties with the language here. But with artistic license, it basically says Lions Bay can issue subdivision approvals. And that's basically where it stops. It doesn't set out anything to do with with requirements. Standards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they all have to be made up each time out of the blue. This bylaw sets out, this this bylaw was prepared by a former municipal engineer who's now consultant with Carl. And myself to develop standards that reflect the lines, the lines-based setting. Some of these standards are more than we. Are likely to require in the near future, but that doesn't really matter. It's better to have more latitude and not use it. Than insufficient latitude and wish you had it. So, uh. This this bylaw, as it's written, provides lots of latitude to set out. Significant, uh, full and complete subdivision, P L R preliminary mail review conditions associated with. Subdivision application, so it's light years ahead of what we have. It's nothing particularly funky, it's primarily by technical.
Okay, I will open it up for questions, uh, Counselor Brown and then I, Counselor Abbott.
So sorry, can I just, is it a community law? Can I just, can someone just give you a little bit of attitude? I did have one other question in the secondary meeting. And I didn't get to, because it was in the next section.
No, sorry, um, we're moving on.
Can you come here the whole evening? There's a need to be a free discussion.
We'll come to it at the end, okay? Yeah, I'm sorry, but there's many of these questions we can take offline and ask the staff as a sidebar. So Counselor Brown, you got your hand up?
Okay, um, in reading through this, there's a lot of of. Things that seemingly are required that I'm not sure that we're. That that most of us are wanting in terms of streetlights and. And and, you know, upgrades to to different different areas. So how rigid, I mean, if someone applies for subdivision. And they receive a, you know, a list of all these requirements, um. How how rigid are those requirements and who determines that and how does that get determined? So really, how does that fit into the the the, um, the ethos and, you know, the the. Real life feel, living and feeling of Lions Bay.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you, that's a really good question. So, uh, the the provisions on there are fully complete. If there, they provide basically a full buffet or smorgasbord of options for a public officer to rely on. For every subdivision application that may be coming, let's say, in the next twenty years. So if, for instance, the townhouse properties across the street decided to come in with an application and. They wanted to redevelop it and do some other density down there. Buck it up into more strategy units, et cetera, they would have to follow a subdivision application approach in all likelihood. And let's just say that that's. Um, they're going to get the full smorgasbord of conditions to your to your credit. And they would have to go through each one and their their structural engineer or their more likely civil engineer or their. B C L S, B C Lancer Bear would go through those together. And determine which of those conditions apply, which ones don't apply and provide a rationale as to why they don't apply. And the third category is they don't want to do it that way. They have another different approach to satisfy that condition. So. Is there a negotiation? Yeah. Yeah, I guess there is a negotiation. Things like streetlights, would they be required in Lions Bay? Sure. Everywhere? Nope, not everywhere, but it's conceivable that in somebody, it's very possible somebody would have a property somewhere in the village that they
That may be part of that.
That may require that. So although it may never be used ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, it's good to have it in there in the one time that it might
So it's just, it just in case clause.
Just, most of those things actually are just in case.
Okay. But it's, I'll just follow up on that. Um, uh, one of my neighbors has sold a piece of his property or sold his two properties, sold one, turned up one driveway, it's overlapping the other, and it's requiring a subdivision application. Seems like a heavy-duty word for it, but to realign the driveways in order to to do that. So he's gonna be receiving this this hit list of all all items?
Bylaw.
Is that?
No.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I just, I just wanna make sure we're not creating a monster.
Oh, absolutely.
And also a a perception of a of a of a um a blockade.
For sure, no, this this but this uh this, but the bylaw provisions, these technical standards, they're generic across every municipality across Canada. Other than those that don't have this. Uh, so region, districts don't have this because it's the province that that approves subdivisions.
Okay.
So what you're referring to with regard to that neighbor scenario is a great example, yeah. So that is a subdivision application for sure, but the type of subdivision is a boundary reclamation, a boundary realignment.
Right.
So that's not increasing the number of lots. So in order to get it signed off, in order to get it registered at the land title office, they have to have authorization because they're gonna change the the legal instructions.
Right.
And so you have to make that happen through the subdivision application process because there's no additional lots being created. This then apply.
Mr. Blackwell, um, just a quick question. And when someone submits a a development proposal, does that automatically go to the public or is that the C A O's responsibility to review that and actually give approval on that? Who gives final approval? When is it escalated to public hearings and such?
Sure, uh, well, when you say development application, uh, it would depend on what kind of development application. So there, let's talk about the multiple kinds of development applications, just to sort of put them into two baskets. So the basket of applications that would require uh council decision, council's the final arbiter on yes or no, include development variance permits, development permits, which Lions Bay doesn't have but should have, rezonings, uh, O C P amendments. Uh, those would be about it. Those are the ones that come to council for a decision. Staff can have the designated authority for certain types of development permit approvals, but that that authority is granted by council resolution for specific types of applications, et cetera, et cetera. You don't have development permits, so that's irrelevant for Lions Bay. The ones, the application that doesn't come to council, subdivision applications. Uh, that's the sole authority of a municipal approving officer. It's a strange uh hole over, I suppose, I would argue, from the era when the the approving officer in the municipality was effectively doing the work of the province, the provincial approving officer. So in that scenario, the approving officer is actually technically working for the province and not the municipality, which is why none of the stuff comes to subdivision applications come to a council before. Discussion fact, the statutes specifically prohibit council from taking it all. It's not even neutral in language. I would have thought the more owners would be zoning and council had the right to approve. Subdivision to me is less than a person zoning change. The council would know ability to weigh in whatsoever.
Sure, uh, Councilor McLaughlin has hand up?
Thank you very much, Mayor Barry. Um, Mr. Blackwell, um, thank you for your work on this. Um, subdivision is not an issue that most villagers are running to. And I I I've been through something similar to uh Councilor Brown's neighbor where it's a technical subdivision just to facilitate something small. But I think when most people are thinking subdivision, they're thinking density, let's use that word. So um so much of what we do, the community is in the dark until they'd wanna hear about it and they hear about it through the back door. And I think subdivision would fall into that word too. And I would hate to think that there's a perception of uh going forward with this is that it it would be deemed that council is supportive of density without community consultation. So tell me I'm wrong. And that if this was to go through, that there will be open consultation and any density, and I mean any will come before council for the final decision.
Sorry, Mr. Blackwell, that's a good question because I think that's uh, anyway, I was asking as well.
That I think, yeah, that's my question and I, it's pretty clear.
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you through you, uh, it's a great question. So the ability to subdivide is defined by the zoning bylaw. So the ability to subdivide is is granted to everybody. Everybody has the right to apply for subdivision. There are a whole bunch of conditions that would define whether or not it's actually achievable. So let's say you had a a one and a half acre lot, say.
Which I do.
Let's guess. And let's say the property was zoned, I don't know, single-family was zoned. And let's say the minimum lot size, and I don't know what the minimum lot size is, but let's say the minimum lot size is six hundred square meters. So in theory, it creates a series of number of lots permitted. The zoning bylaw says you can do that. That's much more achievable if you're living, let's say, in Richmond where it's flat and it's, you just go bang, bang, bang. You line them all up and away you go. Uh, but even there, it's not as possible because it'd be maybe insufficient fire flow at the fire hydrant, insufficient sewer capacity, it'd be insufficient water supply, all kinds of things can limit subdivision. In Lions Bay, all of that applies, including things like subject disposal. Uh, and and through the subdivision process, all these conditions that I was referring to, that that you raised would include specifically in Lions Bay requirement for a geotechnical engineer to define a viable building. Can't create a lot if you, unless you can confirm that it has a buildable area. So would, does this draft bylaw create potential for greater density? No more than, not one lot more than what the current bylaw provides for. And the current zoning provides for is exactly the same number. The only difference is this gives me a large suite of technical tools for me to draw on rather than have to make them up.
Uh, follow-up question, just.
Thank you very much, Mayor Barry. Uh, thank you very much for your explanation. I'll just say the question again on the bottom piece. Tell me I'm wrong, that there will be open consultation on any density issue and that the final decision will come to council.
I would need you to clarify what that means. My, uh, public consultation with density issue, you mean rezoning?
Rezoning.
Yeah, all rezoning applications.
Expansion, density, call it different words.
Well, yeah, so to be clear, so we're talking at the staff. The existing overlay of density is already established in Lions Bay through the various zones, primary of the RS ones. That's that baseline density is set. Doesn't mean that density can be achieved, but it's set. The only time that that baseline changes is somebody come comes in and says, well, actually, I don't wanna have a single family. I wanna have a fourplex. And that, we don't, we, the RS one zone doesn't accommodate fourplexes. So they would have to resell to a a different zone that would accommodate fourplexes. Now, with that, it's the same as what we're doing with the the other zoning. Come for a second, reading, public hearing, third, and then.
So there's process.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And and, uh, Councilor Abbott?
Okay, um, back to subdivision, you help you out. Uh, sixteen hundred square meters can subdivide into two. Eight hundred and the smallest, the one can go down to seven hundred, which should be eight hundred. That's what it says. It says you can do that on um payment of a C A C. What the actual clause in the bylaw says above that, it says minimum lot size eight thousand square meters, which I've always thought someone put an extra zero on. It shouldn't have been eight hundred square meters, but it says eight thousand square meters. And then it says you can go down to eight hundred square meters, as I said, with the seven and eight hundred is the two floor size, on payment of C A Cs. We don't have C A C set up. So in that, until we sort that out, tell me we got wrong, no one can subdivide.
I wouldn't say never, but I would like, I'd be very interested in hearing the rationale or getting around that. So you raised an important point. There are many, many issues with the zoning bylaw. Two of them are before we have for discussion. This is another issue, and what I would tell you from my experience is that that piece of the bylaw is illegal. Because we are prohibiting something based on something we don't have. And you can't do that in terms of natural justice, people have to be able to avail themselves of something if you are regulating it. Right, and we are saying, well, we're limiting or prohibiting you from doing something unless you do this, but we don't have this, so.
Shouldn't we be doing the this first before we do anything else? We should be resolving, um, and this leads me back to to the nice discussion on the R C S, um, which is part of the O C B, and now we're dealing with some mechanics here. Edmund, that's involved, but there's other stuff that that is basically hindering us from moving forward. Um, I do have a couple of technical questions on this as well.
So so, uh, you know, good question. My answer would be, these are two entirely separate pieces of 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 uh bylaw provisions, they're, oh, they're indirectly, I guess, I don't wanna use indirectly, they're they're parallel, but they're not the same. So my suggestion to council, don't consider whether or not you're willing to move this draft bylaw forward based on what the zoning bylaw is or isn't. Consider it on the weight of its content specifically. Now, to your other point, should council also be looking at significant changes to the zoning bylaw? Can't tell you, it's a fire on fire. Uh, it is a mess. Uh, and the one you just raised is a mess. The RS one uh carriage houses provision is a mess, there's there's.
Why, I don't know, why, this seems pretty clear to me.
No, it's 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 ultra-virus, you have something in there under the RS one zone that says carriage houses, and here the provisions around carriage houses. You go up to the the list of permitted uses, it's not permitted. So you're saying here, carriage houses, up here, you're saying no carriage houses. So that's not legal. Uh, two front yards, not legal. So it's not that I sort of like pick in the zoning bylaw part because I, or I just keep bumping into these huge issues. And for me, finding a zoning bylaw or working with a zoning bylaw is elegant, works, should should do is is what I would hope to achieve.
Councilor Abbott, you have a follow-up question that I'll ask one?
Um, I have some questions on some line items and wording in this particular bylaw, um, which I could do now or we can do after.
Well, I suggested maybe one more question, we'll go around the table, come back to you again, uh, just to give some others an opportunity.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a question?
Um, a few questions, I'll pick one. Um, this has been a meeting where we get to discuss things, but anyway. It's supposed to be a more free-flowing meeting. It's in the beginning restricted as to what I can say. Um, page five of the bylaw, this is in discussions about community water systems and sewers, it says, where the bylaw requires, this is clause two point one point three. And the bylaw requires the provision of community water or community sewer sewer system, the approving officer may require such systems to be connected to the village's respective system. Why would that be made? Why would you allow anyone not to connect to the system if we have it? Unless, of course, it's of a magnitude that's bigger than what a system can have.
Thank you. Uh, so I didn't create that provision, that was between Carl and the engineer. Uh, I could tell you how, as a approving officer in my career, how I would take that. And the answer is having latitude is always a great thing. Uh, and the reason is, the notion of a one-size-fits-all sometimes works, but oftentimes it doesn't. So that's the example you pointed out is a good example where it may, having the latitude to not acquire that for something that we don't foresee is a nice little insurance policy. Would you expect it to be connected? Most of the time, I'd say a hundred percent. I can't, I can't think of off the top of my head a situation where we wouldn't require connection. Should that, should there be the ability to connect?
Okay, um, uh, my question was, um, you seem to be saying that we're, there's a lot of deficiencies. It it, are you suggesting that we need to go and revisit the O C P? And is that something we should be doing prior to finalizing these uh various bylaws? And and it comes back again to strategy or or uh the council getting together and planning strategy and and the next steps and so on, but I I keep hearing that we've got a lot of deficiencies and it's almost like we need to go back to basics and and sort of that that overriding uh vision for the village. Um, you know, what starts up with culture, uh, vision, uh, O C P, you know, has there are are we sort of jumping by that? Because like, again, uh, you mentioned O C P quite often, so.
That's a really good question. Uh, the short answer is the O C P that currently exists is flawed. Uh, it should, just just as standard practice, it should be brought back to the community and the community given the opportunity to weigh in and see if there's any appetite to change it. The answer could be no, everything is good, or a few tweaks, or no, we wanna make some wholesale changes. That that, it's time, it's it's well past due. In in fast-growing communities, the baseline is about every five years you do an update, not a rewrite, an update. At ten years, it should be an update, rewrite the whole thing. So yes is the answer, but a- and normally what you do is you update the zoning bylaw or rewrite the zoning bylaw, and then you, after that's done, you you update zoning bylaw so that they 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 speak to one another. So yes and yes. However, what I'm bringing forward to you here, so with regard to subdivision servicing bylaw, that's separate. That's a standalone bylaw that that I'm bringing forward because the one we have now is one page long. And this one is, how big is this one? Do you know how many pages? Lots of pages.
O C P?
No, the 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 draft.
Draft.
Subdivision service bylaw, I can't remember a page.
It all starts on eighty-one.
It's a bunch of pages, uh, all technical stuff, uh.
Hundred pages.
Yes, versus one page now, so, and that's all technical standards.
I wrote that one page, it was concise and made us this morning write into a page.
It didn't work that way, it's all engineering standards. So I would encourage you to keep that one separate off to the side. Uh, with these other zoning amendments, uh, they're coming because the house is on fire, it's the only reason why they're coming. Uh, it should be a rewrite of the the zoning bylaw. If you said, which one is more important? We have one pot of money, which would you do first? If you said, which one is more important? We have one pot of oil. Which would you do first? I would say, well, the proper sequence is OCP versus zoning, but the zoning is a thing that is really problematic. We can survive on the OCP. It's hard to work with the zoning bylaw. Part of the reason is the zoning bylaw is a bylaw, the regulations, the non-discretionary, the regulations, they must be followed, they're laws. OCP is its policy. So you, the council is not required to follow anything in the OCP. Bylaw, you're obligated to follow anything in the OCP. The only sort of footnote on that is you also can't make decisions that conflict with anything in the OCP, even though local government does it all the time, unless we can, they don't. They're not supposed to.
Okay. Um, any other questions, Councilor Abbott? You had questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Um, there's lots of talking here about a flood management plan. And on one page, page thirty four, it actually mentions that the flood management plan, by law number twenty seven fifty one of twenty twenty one, I think that's a copy and paste from somewhere else. We don't have one of those. I think that's something.
What page is that on, number?
Page thirty four.
We're all checking that.
But there's other places that we've talked about flood management plans, um, in several places and, but then flood management is an issue for us.
It is, it is, but I don't think we have a formal document that's referred to. I'll have that.
We don't have that document, definitely not.
Yeah, not that I'm aware, unless it's stacked away someplace. I don't know about.
The talk about flood management is more what's happening in here is that people that aren't living on the side of a cliff, very few of us.
On the waterfront.
Have flood management issues. Okay, on the waterfront, I guess. Um, there's no mention in this bylaw about the Kudun report, right? Um, now I was told some time ago by the building inspector, um, that, that Kudun report is still sent to everyone who applies for, for, for a permit, right? Um, should it not be mentioned in here? Well, all the other things they have to comply with. If they are being asked to comply with that, why is it not included?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thanks for that. Uh, it's not because we're not going to specify what report they defer to. We're simply saying you have that, have a geotechnical engineer side off of this. So they're going to have to do whatever due job diligence that they see fit to create a lot. Now, let's move on. Now the lot's created. There's nothing on it. It's just bare land. But then you have a geotech that says, here's a building envelope. You can build a house somewhere within this area. So then somebody buys that lot, submit a building permit application. So what's coming before council on Tuesday is a brand new building bylaw. We've gotten rid of everything. It's not, it's not an update. We've thrown the other one in the garbage and this is a brand new bylaw that this Dave, the district's, Shawna and Ralph Hildebrandt have developed. And with my direction being that I want to ensure we are insulated around any claim that might arise because of any perceived assurances that we are provided around geotechnical safety by mere virtue of the fact that we issued a building permit. So that is part of what's been embedded. Uh, it's been updated to reflect current, uh, BC Building Code regulations. So it is excellent. There's a tremendous amount of work that's gone into that building bylaw. It's an excellent bylaw and deals with exactly what you're talking about. It just doesn't mention.
It's not mentioned.
Does this specify that report? Because that one might be superseded by another report.
Okay, but currently that was the one that they, people are giving to it.
Yeah, yeah, it's headed out. Any other questions, Councilor Abbott?
Yeah, there was a bunch of tables and I think you're going to tell me that it's been done. There was a bunch of tables on, I'm about to, fourteen, I bounced around a bit here. Um, yeah, fourteen and then going on about water usage, water pressures. Um, so all these things have been lines bayized. They've all been addressed as to their capacities and so on, capable, available in Lions Bay.
Yeah, that's Blackwell.
I'm not going to go so far as to say what's available. What has been designed for. Yes, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about some of the issues that you're aware of in the IC.
Sure.
Yeah, so.
But I mean, the, we've sort of managed to look to these and we've checked them against our stuff and it's not just copy and paste from.
You, you, well, I have to hope that that's what happens. So Carl has worked very closely with the engineer. So I have to assume that all of this technical, I mean, you know, Carl's very diligent about these details. So I, I would take comfort in him.
He's dominant, okay. Okay, um. So I bounced it out a little bit because I was following you. Hundred, hundred year storms in Kelvin, I'm assuming Cole looked at that one, but I don't think, I would find it unlucky. We designed for a hundred years.
Well, like two hundred years now.
We should have designed ten.
All right. Uh, any specific questions, uh, Councilor Abbott?
Yeah, just one second.
I'll remind council, you can reach out to, uh, Mr. Blackwell as a sidebar.
Well, I think these guys, these kind of sessions where we all discuss things, I think is, is, is valid. This has been bouncing people off, I mean, people's ideas. You hear what someone else is saying.
Ask the next question, Councilor Abbott. What might be helpful too is to, to maybe make a list of questions rather than scrolling through.
Uh, I mean, the only reason I'm bouncing around is because I try to needle for other people. All right. We've been answering questions.
Uh, any other questions? No? Okay, uh, next item is resolutions.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Um, it's more an observation than a question, I think. I think ideally we would be, you know, we would establish our OCP and then look at the enabling legislation to, you know, to support that. But clearly in, you know, you're seeing bylaw and fires, we've got stuff that's illegal and unclear and so on. So we're dealing with our, our municipal advisor, you know, looked at our bylaws, looked at, looked at our, our zoning and particularly the building bylaw and said it's so far, it, it just identified it as a really prior, uh, key thing that had to be dealt with. So I think while it may not be the optimal way to deal with things, I think we have no option. And we, instead of, and we seem to be, you know, going around in circles a lot of different times. I think we need to nail whatever we can down and then build on that, so.
Good. Yeah, Councilor Abbott.
Um, so on that point about the building bylaw, I guess not in front of us, but some, I mean, I'm just, people talked in events. Um, one of the things that came in sessions, you and I sat in at the museum, but one of, one of the things that came up was, oh, no, you didn't, I was on my, the session we were discussing about vice modern stuff and it came up about, um, non-convexible building materials being put into bylaws. Um, and one made the point that you cannot, cannot prescribe in the bylaw something that can't be done according to building code. But you can, of course, add in non-convexible building materials as long as it complies with all of that, which I believe it does, did get into the details, quite numbers when you speak. Again, you had some, you had twenty minutes and we're watching the clock, so. Um, is there any of that coming in this building bylaw? Um, we're about to see. And the second question is, how much of the step code is coming in this building bylaw? What step are we going to be on? Because those are, well, that was one place we were well behind.
Okay, uh, this is the building bylaw which will be published in the agenda for Tuesday, which we haven't seen.
Correct.
Okay. All right, a quick answer, but it's not in this agenda, so.
So, uh, what I can tell you is that, uh, I mentioned earlier, there's been a tremendous amount of work that's gone into this to not only take sort of the, the generic bylaw, so Blitstone has developed a, a generic bylaw for municipalities. And so Ralph Hildebrandt took that and working with Dave and Shawna, they modified it to strip out those things that don't apply to Lions Bay for whatever reason.
He's real fool.
He's a serious lawyer. So I can't tell you specifically if that language is in there.
All right, Mr. Blackwell, um, cut it short because this isn't on the agenda. It's Tuesdays and we're just rambling out.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, uh, it, it'll be before you on Tuesday. You'll be able to look for that if you have any specific concerns. And you can choose as a council to give it one meeting at a time or two. You have multiple meetings to give it and tweak it as necessary. But I'm not knowing those details, I can't speak to them right now.
Okay, we'll move to public questions. Any questions out of the gallery? Anyone online?
No.
Okay, a motion to adjourn meeting. Moved by Councilor McLaughlin, seconded by Councilor Broden. All in favor?
Yes.
Very, thank you. Go.
Put your hands in the air.
Your, uh.